The invocation will be led by Alice Gormes and the pledge by Johnny Beckford.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come tonight to do the business of the county. We ask that you will be with us, that everything we do, say, and think would be for the betterment of the county. We thank you so much for the traveler mercies that we've received arriving here safe and hope that we will also be granted traveler mercies to arrive back at home safely. In your precious name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that everybody please turn their cellphones down all the way or off for the meeting. Adoption of agenda.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hello.
We just were voting on the adoption of the agenda. Do you want to vote for it? You hear me, Dabney?
Mr. Cruz, are you able to hear Chairman Bo?
Yeah, I'm on.
Can you hear me, Dabney?
I can hear you, but echoing right bad.
Okay, well, we're looking for your vote on the adoption of the agenda.
I'll call out if I need you.
Okay. Seven of eight were. Look for approval of minutes, September 21st.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? You want to vote, Dabney? Seven of eight. September 28th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Seven of eight. Public comment.
Yes, sir, Chairman Bo, we do have individuals sign up for public comment. The first person to speak will be James Branch, and after Mr. Branch will be Kenda Honeman.
Good evening. My name is James Mail Branch, Jr. I'm a citizen of Buckingham County and of Warmminster Church Community. Citizens of Warmminster, Yoggabio, Manio, James River Highway, Union Hill, Shelton, Storger, and other communities, as well as myself, are very concerned about the core drilling and mining project of Aston Bay. This project will, if allowed, will destroy these communities and much more. Buckingham County does need new business, but not at the expense of destroying Buckingham County. The core sampling and eventually mines that follow will cause irreparable damage to Buckingham County and surrounding areas. The environment will be impacted, first and foremost, because of the depletion of water supply. Contamination of the air and water will certainly occur, thus affecting the wildlife as well as human lives or residents in all surrounding areas and eventually from one end of the county to the other. There's no water in the Warmminster-Union Hill area that crosses Route 56, James River Highway, except for North River. All the hundreds of streams and springs where I live at Warmminster start at the northeast side of Route 56, James River Highway. These small streams, creeks, branches, et cetera, flow to the James River and the Slate River at or near Bremel Black. This will eventually affect the areas of Warmminster Church Community and follow sea. Residents of this end of the county want new business, but not at the expense of destroying the county. The residents of Warmminster would be forced to leave forever. This is not something we can recover from. Times have changed. We borrowed the lands from our county, of the county, et cetera, from our children, grandchildren, and future generations. There should not be a meeting that ends any further discussion of core sampling, mining, drilling, or a zoning laws. Don't let Buckingham be the core center that opens the hand door of Aston Bay, a door that we cannot close. Vote no to any father, core sampling, or mining in the county. Zoning planning and supervisors should not be looking at a quick fix yes. The county needs more business opportunities, however. Chairman Patrick Bo, this is not the way. This will destroy the county. I plead for you to vote no to the core sampling, mining, and nothing else. Other residents, as well as myself, know that new business may cause some small business to not exist forever. You have to crack a few eggs to make an alignment. If the planning commission or board supervisor would pursue them. I would like to know if any of the planning commission or board members have checked out the South Carolina Aston Bay project. How can you approve of something of this magnitude effect on so many people without checking on the previous mining projects of the county, of the company? The zoning administrator has informed me that she has requested paperwork or has made it from Aston Bay and has received nothing. There are family cemeteries and land with hundreds of people that they will have.
Thank you, sir. We've got your letter. We can read it.
Kenda Honeman. After Ms. Honeman will be Paul Barlow.
Evening. You asked me to come back tonight and speak, so I hope you'll listen. I'm Kenda Honeman from District 5. Citizens of uncovered information regarding the Aston Bay Holdings Buckingham Project. Does anyone here really think that drilling isn't the precursor to mining? What's the count on comments for and against facilitating gold mining here? From page 33 of a document protecting your community against mining companies and other extractive industries called social license, mining companies are very much aware that they must also get the approval of the local communities before going ahead with projects. This is referred to as the social license. It is not an official requirement in most countries, but even though a company obtains its EIA or environmental impact assessment, most investors would be wary of investing in a project if the mining company didn't have the approval of the local communities. Mining companies are often willing to spend millions of dollars and make endless promises to try to obtain the social license. They promise to build schools or bridges, provide scholarships and jobs, whatever they think will appease a community. Sometimes, these are official agreements signed by the company and the local municipal government and/or the state or national government. Sometimes, it's more informal. While some promises are kept, many are not. A company may continue to make gifts to keep the population pacified, but in the process, they may create social havoc, violence, and deep divisions within communities and families. Community consent, one of the most powerful instruments in protecting communities from devastation caused by extractive projects, is the right of communities to give or withhold their consent to a project. This is called the right to free prior informed consent, FPIC. For it to be meaningful, the consent needs to be given free of pressure from government or industry prior to the beginning of any activity that may impact a community's environment or social well-being and must be informed. Leave the ordinance as it is, thus continuing to prohibit exploratory drilling. This was the decision you made regarding the noise ordinance. This is the choice I ask you to make for the good of Buckingham residents, environment, and future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barlow, and after Mr. Barlow will be Chad Oba.
Well, good evening. I've never spoken before this panel before. My name's Paul Barlow. I live in District 5. Little quick story. One year ago, almost to the day, two gentlemen showed up on my property. They had hip waiter boots on, safety vests. They were Canadians. They asked me if I had been hearing any drilling going on around my area. We said no. And they said, well, a company called Aston Bay found some gold around your house, and would it be okay if we took some samples from your creek? We're trying to trace back the source of the gold. So this was another Canadian mining company, and one year ago, they did not even know where the location was. So they took two five-gallon bucket samples from my creek, Little Sycamore Creek, and sent them up to their lab up in Canada. Eight months later, this past year, they returned. Both were geologists, and they said that in my creek, Little Sycamore Creek, it was microscopic gold. I wasn't going to get rich. And I asked them, I said, well, if you would have found gold on my property, what would have been the next step? Would you have sunk in a shaft? And they both laughed, and they said, no, open pit mining. And they said, look to the Hale Gold Mine down in South Carolina. It will be exactly like that. So the Hale Mine uses five extraction processes, all of which involve the use of cyanide. The cyanide waste goes into tailing ponds or a big waste lagoon. The Hale Mine's waste lagoon was extended recently from 524 acres to 632 acres. And also, what's left over is acid generating rock from other processes where they pour cyanide over big heaps of rock to cap, and the cyanide extracts the gold from the ore, and then they have these huge piles of contaminated rock. The CEO of Aston Bay, he's like bragging online that we're a bunch of local yokels, and we don't know what we have, and permitting is easy. And he looks to the Hale Gold Mines model as being brilliant. In the 15 years when the mine will close, we're going to have these EPA superfund sites that we're going to leave to our grandchildren, these huge pits of cyanide waste, and it's going to be stored forever. They're not going to leave it, take it away from the site. They're going to leave it here in the county, and it's just going to devastate everything. The land will be ruined. So don't let this thing get out of hand, folks, okay? This core drilling is only the beginning of this, and they've got high expensive lawyers.
Next will be Chad Oba, followed by Heidi Bertow.
Good evening. First of all, great appreciation to the county for adapting to COVID and making it possible for citizens to take part in the public process. I really appreciate that. I'm going to be speaking to what everyone else has spoken to so far, which is your first agenda item, which is the core drilling. Firstly, I just feel like you need to slow this whole process down. Many people do not even know about it, and they may not even know, even having heard about it, what it might mean to their lives. You've heard what it could mean to their lives. In the immediate area, I've learned that this drilling has already caused water depletion that was reported to me this evening, where the family unable to do their laundry, their daily laundry, since this has come in. It's not been a drought year. There's no reason for that, and the Warmminster Church had to dig a new well. So water tables will be, and already are, being drastically affected. Clearly, an amendment may lead to open pit mining. It's the next step. I'm very opposed to the idea of a simple register to do this also, and anything that would push this along, I think, is a very bad idea, and I really hope that you'll slow the whole process down. I question why you would even want to open the door to a company that's already broken your county ordinance and then continue to drill after they were asked to stop. That should be a really big red flag. So very simply, I ask you to please delay passing any amendment or taking any action or zoning change that would allow open pit gold mining to continue.
Next, we have Heidi Bertow, and following Heidi will be Suzanne Jones Snotty.
Good evening. I'm Heidi Bertow, James River District. And more on gold. The Aston Bay Drillers were informed in June that their drilling is prohibited by county law after four years of exploratory drilling without the county's knowledge or permission. And so now, we're really concerned that you want to reward very bad behavior by simply requiring a registration for drilling. So what penalties would you have for other illegal and injurious activities? Have you checked at Aston Bay Holdings website? They essentially brag that Virginia is easy prey, as you've already heard, and you're willing to let them walk all over us? They essentially, so we, the residents, taxpayers, and neighbors insist, beg of you, to slow down and take a really good look at what open pit gold mining really is. We heard you deny last week that exploratory drilling for gold leads to gold mining, but that's exactly what it's for. Core sample, sampling drilling is not listed as an allowable activity in the A1 zone, nor other zones that allow for mining and quarering. And so I was looking over the zoning code and realized, again, to create a special use permit would be, again, to reward bad behavior for the four years of drilling? Yet, it would also, it would also set a standard for closer scrutiny of this activity, at least I would hope so. It could set requirements for oversight, just like well water drilling and sewage has with the health department. I talked to Paul Lewis, and he tells me that a GW2 form is filed for each well dug, listing things like the day the drill started and finished, the depth, flow, size of the hole. So what needs to be in place for proper oversight of core sampling drilling for commercial purposes? I mean, do we even know that? I would like to formally propose to you, actually, also, to make zoning changes to remove the allowable activity of mining and quarrying in the A1 zone as it's contrary to the purpose stated in this zone. And on that paper I handed out, I copied the purposes for Agriculture 1 and also the industrial zones, and you see, they're quite at odds. So I ask that there be a closer look at zoning codes overall to see where other situations would benefit by requiring impactful exploratory work to be regulated. And what about requiring environmental impact studies? I'll just finish by saying, let's please be open for clean business with real benefits to the county and no hidden costs. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Jones Snotty, followed by Swami Dhananda.
Good evening. So I'm going to shake things up a little bit. I tend to do more object lessons. I am a teacher at the high school. I was also gradus here in the county. I've been gone for many years, but now that we're home, I am trying to be more proactive within our community. Ms. Edmondson is going to be passing out a chocolate chip cookie to you all. I apologize to those in the audience. So I'm going to do a 45-minute lesson that I would do in my classroom in two and a half minutes. So once you get your cookie, I want you to lay it on that blank piece of paper. You've got draw circle around it. That cookie is going to represent Buckingham County or the Warmminster area where this gold mine is going to be. First, I want you to think about, can you smell it? Yes, you can smell it. That would represent your air pollution should a mine come into that area, okay? Now, we already know that there's some good stuff in there, chocolate chips, maybe some sugar, okay? So I'm convinced that those chocolate chips, there are going to be some gold. So if you were a student in my class, I would give you a straw. First, you're going to take a core sample. I want you to take that straw, shove it down in the middle while trying to maintain the integrity of that land, okay? Next, you've gotten your sample, you know that there's good stuff there, you're given a toothpick. You are going to mine that chocolate chip out using a toothpick or whatever tool that you have purchased from your teacher and maintain the integrity of that land while you are doing that. Oh, by the way, is there a grease spot underneath your cookie? Probably, that's what's going to seep into your groundwater. Now, are there any crumbs, and where are those crumbs located? Have they exceeded the perimeter? Well, that is your overflow into surrounding communities. So I've provided you with a gift of a chocolate chip cookie. Now I give you a challenge. Never eat a chocolate chip cookie again without thinking about gold mining. And I want you to think about the integrity of that cookie, the integrity of our county, and what we're leaving for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we eat the cookie now?
Yes. They can't open before now because you know.
Swami Dhananda and Marie Flowers will be next.
May I mask for talking?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much for having us. So my name is Swami Dhananda. I live in Warmminster Church Road in District 5, within a mile of the gold mining exploration sites. And as one of the landowners there, I am certainly concerned about the possible impact on our water, air, and land, and our health as well. I live, I have lived in Buckingham now for almost 40 years, and 10 years now in Warmminster Church Road, and now operate a small business, Grown for Good, little farm, which produces a growth, medicinal herbs and flowers, and we're producing pain relieving salve, cream, and oil. So I am very concerned about water especially, because the gold mining is known to pollute groundwater. And how important is the groundwater for all of us who live in this rural area, depending on the well? And so the core sampling drilling is well-known to pollute the groundwater for many, many miles, not just few miles. I would love the commissioners to study, or perhaps you know, then let us know, how many miles of impact is it going to have? Would it reach Buckingham Courthouse? Would it go to Darwin? I think we all need to know what impact, especially the water, because we depend on water for our life, our drinking. And you know that Aston Bay has already done almost 23, I understand, exploratory drilling since 2016, and they have used many, many thousands of water already. Where was the source of that water? Where did the waste go? I think the citizens would have the right to know. I would love it if you could tell us. And also, would you be holding them accountable for what they have done already? And thank you for rightly halting their drilling. I would like also you to consider forming a citizen advisory board so that we can participate along with you to find the real facts, information, and stand on the same information for making decisions for our Buckingham. And see, if there's no clean water, I would potentially need to sell my land and move away. After 40 years of living in Buckingham, that is not something I would like to do, and our neighbors, I'm concerned about them as well. So please kindly delay the decision if you can. Take more time. Allow us to participate with you and learn from you as well what you find out. And thank you so much for your service, as always.
Thank you.
Marie Flowers will be next, followed by Quinn Robinson.
My name is Marie Flowers. I live in the 3rd district. And will the amendment open a Pandora's box? We all know the issue of creating jobs. Now, the Bible says man is the steward of the earth. Does this mean that humans can do anything they want? I believe the message is to take care of God's creation. This includes all life, plants, animals, and humans. If we exploit the earth for gold, are we turning our backs on this message? You, our government, in my opinion, and I think probably many, is supposed to protect its citizens. We need money, yes, to do this, but what price will we pay? Coal miners died from lack lung, water was poisoned, air pollution, and government does not enforce regulations sufficiently. And examples, the Massey Mine disaster, Flint, Michigan, and I think all those people that were responsible should be in jail. You didn't, you all, this board and the board of supervisors, did not protect the people of Union Hill to the level that you could have. You all heard all of the people that gave all kinds of information, and you did not allow, as far as I know, any of the citizens to have any real input. And I believe this is a moral and ethical problem. How about if you volunteered to have the arsenic dumped on your property? I think we need to try to get more Amish people in this community, but would this, I don't know enough about the geology of Buckingham, but would this amendment apply to, in other instances? And if it does, we can wait. But this is a moral and ethical, you need to think of people, the other people, but it's very, very tempting. Gold is very, very tempting, and thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, next will be Kelly Schwartz.
Good evening. My name is Quinn Robinson. I live in District 4, out in Andersonville, right up next to the church. And I want to speak against allowing any permitting for this stuff. We've just been through six years of dancing around and combat, and that's what it was in many cases with Dominion. And the whole thing was about preserving rural Buckingham. And every time something like this comes up, and the first time, it was with the Love Dump, which is now a superfund site, and that's a great attraction to anybody. So careless and irresponsible to allow that to happen. And then invited, the government facilitated Dominion in the effort to put in the pipeline, and the courts proved that they did not meet the legal standard, and it's unfortunate we have to go through this again. I really want to know why these people weren't arrested and cited for pampering with the properties. It's not a matter of just they can do with what they want. Why do we have a planning commission? There has to be some sort of control where you end up with more polluted water, poisoned ground that's just good for nothing. And people keep coming here because the response, there's so little defense against it. This gold vein runs for all of the length of the Appalachians, right up to Maine. And why did they stop here? Well, South Carolina's Well, South Carolina is a good target, but so are we. So let's not put up with it. The world is changing quickly, and there has to be great awareness in defense of the environment and of the land. If we don't have that, we've got nothing. And I'm concerned that every time this comes up, Buckingham is so willing to give up what is most valuable for a couple of gold beans. It just isn't worth it. And I don't think there's any oversight, and I appreciate the earlier comment about citizen participation. If this goes forward, there should be no severability on the terms of the permits. There should be no memorandums of understanding because that's just hiding the truth, and we all know it. It's a lawyer's device. And also, we can have a citizen review of these things. I hope that, and we have a lot of experience from the pipeline, and if it means having to have drones all over the county looking for these little people, well, we should do it. Why haven't they been arrested? What about the taxes they owe? If they've been here for four years? I got my tax bill, and they said there's a 10% penalty if they don't pay in time. Well, they're four years in the deficit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kelly Schwartz has chosen to not speak tonight. Our next speaker is Tom Schwartz, followed by Teresa McManus.
All right, I'm going to be fast here. Tom Schwartz, District 5. I listened to your little prayer here, and I almost had to laugh. Best for Buckingham. I found out about this on a Friday. On Monday morning, I got up, called Health Department. But I talked to Jeff Wells, the water engineer for the Health Department of Virginia, right? Then I called Department of Economics, Environmental Quality, and talked to Jay Roberts over this district. Nobody talked to him. Then I called Damian, Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy. Nobody's talked to him, right? Had a big, long talk with him. Asked him to come here tonight. He can't come here unless you guys invite him, all right? He said, you guys should be asking the professionals. You guys don't know what you're into, all right? And I'm just talking about the water. I'll fight the mine when we get there, all right? But you don't know what you're getting to, all right? I'm probably the only one in this room that's ever drilled a core before, and probably the only one that's ever drilled water wells here before. Every time they go through that, they're going through our water table. Every time. Your table right here, right now, is average of 23 feet. There's no such thing as drilling a dry core, all right? There's chemicals used. You guys are passing something that you know nothing about without talking to people that know about it, or biting them down and getting their opinions. Damian said he would be happy to come here, as would Department of Health, as would Department of Environmental Quality. But no one's asked him. Guys don't know what you're doing. And furthermore, you're passing a law over all of A1 in Buckingham. Go get a permit. You can drill, you can poke a hole. When I got here, I'd drilled my own wells before, so I was going to go poke my own wells. Health Department said, oh, no, you're not going to do that because they don't want me poisoning you guys. But you're going to let companies just come and poke wells? We have no idea where they're poking them? You don't know what chemicals they're using? How are they suing these wells? You got nothing in the statutes. You guys are just totally unprepared for this. And you say that little prayer, you know, do what's best for Buckingham. Please listen to the little prayer you guys say, and do what's best for Buckingham, and do some more research before you guys pass this stuff.
Good evening. Teresa McManus. I was here last time, but with the Board of Supervisors. I listened to you guys, and I've listened to these folks. Integrity, where's yours? Where is your integrity? What if the mine was in your neighborhood? Are you willing for mercury, arsenic, cyanide, lead petroleum byproducts, acid? What about your grandkids? Do you even give a damn? Do you care about us? Where's your integrity? Next question, where's the money go? I'd like to see where the money goes. We've all seen politics lately. It's all about the cash. Who's getting paid off? Who's got little bits coming in? Do we have to worry about our Board of Supervisors? Do we have to worry about our planning commission? What if this was in your backyard? What are you going to say to your children and your grandchildren? Have you heard anyone here tonight that wants this? I just found out about this. I found out about it when I came to argue with the Board of Supervisors. None of us in Buckingham know. I talked about being a good neighbor there. Where are you being a good neighbor to me? We came here because of the ruralness. We love this community. You want to bring money here? You've got an industrial park right behind Lucky's. I talked five years ago on how you could bring industry here. And with COVID, by God, you got a site back there with high-speed internet. You have people who work at Capital One and Verizon and everything else in this community. Set up, have those companies help you build an area, and let those people work from there. You don't need to be ruining our water, our air, killing our grandchildren, our livestock, killing our life. But of course, apparently, there's no integrity in Buckingham. Apparently, we're a bunch of yokels. It doesn't matter. We have no education. We're easy pick. Are you an easy pick? Do you have integrity? Do you believe in your county? Do you want to help your people? Or do you not give a damn? Is somebody's pocket being lined? They broke the law, I found out tonight. What have you done about it? These are questions I want to ask. What have you done? I know damn well you'd haul my ass into jail if I broke the law. Why aren't you hauling them into jail? Why aren't you fining them? Where are their tax money? Why is there a different standard for them, for the elite, than for the common people? Because we are the common people. Go look at your integrity and go pray to your God that you make the right decisions for Buckingham.
Thank you.
Chairman Bo, that's all that signed up to speak in person, but I will be reading the email comments that came through this weekend and earlier today. The first comment comes from Catherine Denby. Subject is gold mining in Buckingham, and she goes on to say, "Good evening. I certainly thank each planning commission member for your service, especially during these difficult times. I read the report published in the Farmville Herald on October 21st about core sampling for gold in Buckingham. I am alarmed at what is being proposed by Aston Bay, as well as by the reported comments of the commissioners at the September 2020 meeting. This isn't a legitimate form of business opportunity, as expressed by Mr. Bo, but rather a damaging exploitation of land and water supplies in the county. It seems short-sighted to allow a company to conduct this type of activity at the cost of property values and taxpaying citizens. I'm writing to respectfully ask that the planning commission not add the necessary zoning text amendment. Thank you for your time, and thank you again for your service to Buckingham County." Catherine Denby. The next comment comes to us from Julie Quillan, James River District, 4484 Warminster Church Road. "Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Julie Quillan, and I grew up on Warminster Church Road. As a child, my brother and I spent many days playing in the creek behind our house. Like many kids growing up in this county, the woods, fields, and streams on our property were our sanctuary. My father has lived on Warminster Church Road for over 40 years. Although I have been living out of state for the last several years, my father's land is the land that I plan to live on someday and where I hope to raise a family. I want to thank you all for considering a zoning text amendment that will include core sampling drilling for commercial purposes in the special use permit section of the A1 district zoning text. I support the zoning text amendment as a necessary first step, and I do not support a registration process, which I believe is too weak a regulatory process for an environmental impact of this magnitude. A visit to Aston Bay's Holdings website clearly shows their excitement about both the gold prospects and the lack of regulations in Buckingham County. One can only assume that the long-term goal is to establish an open-pit gold mining operation. I've spoken to many neighbors in the James River District, and like me, they fear the environmental impact of a large-scale, open-pit gold mine in Buckingham County. I, too, am concerned about the future of the property that I hold so dear, as well as the future of Buckingham County. I urge you to pass this zoning text amendment, which will serve as a protective measure for our community, and I look forward to addressing this extremely important issue in upcoming meetings and public forums." Julie Quillan. The next comments come from Stephanie Rinaldi. She states, "My name is Stephanie Rinaldi. I live in District 5 at 2878 Warminster Church Road. These comments are for the October 26, 2020 Planning Commission hearing. The question before you tonight is whether or not to pursue a zoning text amendment that would allow for the commercial drilling in areas zoned A1. Ideally, if you were concerned about the well-being of this community, you would be voting on a text amendment that would disallow mining and all related activity in the A1 zone. Ideally, you would read the description of A1 and see how blatantly contrary mining is to that zone. Ideally, you would recognize that commercial drilling does not bring jobs or money to this community. You would see that drilling is only a precursor to mining. And again, you would note that mining is unquestionably the opposite of what the A1 zone is for. But we do not live in an ideal world, and so here we are. Here we are discussing how to allow commercial drilling in A1, only because a company has been drilling there illegally for years. Aston Bay has been telling their investors that they aren't required to get a permit to drill in this county, neglecting to mention the fact that drilling is not provided for in our zoning ordinance and is therefore prohibited. You are here tonight to vote between one option that will allow this company to continue a venture they began illegally, and another option that would delay that venture. I request that you consider the latter and vote for the zoning text amendment. If, however, you are here tonight to vote on what is actually best for the community, I request that you consider something else entirely. Scrap the idea of allowing drilling in A1. Don't waste your time and energy on finding a way to legitimize the illegal activities of a foreign company. Think instead about what fines and fees this company might owe the county for their illegal activities. Spend your time and energy on finding ways to bring other businesses to the county, businesses that will respect you and the community, rather than brag about avoiding permits, businesses that will create jobs for community members, that will help the community grow and keep it healthy. Let's not allow this one company's illegal activity to distract us from what this community really needs. Thank you for your time, Stephanie Rinaldi." And our next comments come from Margaret Rubin. "Considering how notoriously toxic the byproducts of gold mining are known to be, it is shocking that the planning commission has not already shut down the prospect of gold mining in Buckingham. There are countless studies that have shown heavy metal, cyanide, and other hazardous waste contamination of drinking water due to gold mining. The result of heavy metal contamination has been brain damage to young children, cancers, and organ failure. It is insanity to even consider this proposal. Attached is one of the countless studies documenting the toxic byproducts produced by gold mining. They list the site as www.degrider.com. Sincerely, Margaret Rubin." Our next comment comes from Jim Plitt, and his comment states, "Right up there with strip mining and fracking is gold mining. There is no history of responsible gold mining ever. Do not even consider this idea." And last, I have a comment from Diana Woodall. She states, "Hello. I am writing on behalf of Friends of Buckingham to say I am opposed to any and all kind of open-pit gold mining in Buckingham County. We do not need or want this kind of activity in our county, which is inconsistent with current zoning laws or stated mission of the county. Thank you, Diana Woodall." And Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for public comment.
Thank you. Close the public comment period. Old business.
Old business tonight is going to be a staff report in regard to core sampling, commercial and prospecting, commercial. Our county attorney, E.M. Wright, will discuss the measures that have been passed out to you at your station. The first one is the memorandum, and the second one will be the procedural discussion.
Evening, members of the commission. When we last got together, you asked me to consider whether you could do two things, one of which could be to establish the...
Can't hear you.
Hold on.
That mic should be loud.
You have your feedback. Both of them are working. To look at two things.
You've got to get the mic closer to his mouth. Turn the little one off and use the big one. Not fair to those who can't hear.
Jim, you want to come up here?
No, I'm fine.
I know this one works.
Are we able to hear things now, all right? I think when we were last here together, there was a discussion about...
A little closer.
They can't hear in the back.
You have to hold it close.
You know, multitasking is one thing that I'm not particularly focused on when I'm trying to convey some information. So I apologize if you need to say, put it closer, repeat it, do whatever, you won't offend me at all, so. Whether you could authorize prospecting, commercial prospecting.
You go all the way to the other side, or it's open, nobody's close to you.
I go down and take Mr. Cruz's place.
There you go. That way you'll be. You'll be fast. You're about out of time. Come on now, Mr. Wright. Almost.
Let's try it again. How is that? All right, so the question was, could you allow prospecting, commercial prospecting in the A1 zone as a byright use? And then request the person who is exercising that right to register with the county to identify where prospecting might be occurring and provide the county with the results of such prospecting. The byright part is no problem. I mean, obviously, you can just amend the zoning ordinance to include the byright use in whatever district you want to be, A1, industrial, wherever you want to put that. That would accomplish the byright use for commercial prospecting. Registration component gets a little bit more complicated. As most of you are aware, Virginia is a Dillon State rule, which means the county can only enact regulation to the extent that it's authorized by the state of Virginia. If you use a zoning ordinance, it's authorized by state, but the zoning ordinance regulates activities, not people. In other words, if you look at your zoning ordinance, there's nothing in there that refers to what people can do. It says what activities they can engage in in those zones. So you've got to find something outside of the zoning ordinance to require that registration. Now, the Code of Virginia does provide that you can require registration of businesses that operate in the county. Now, there are restrictions on that, there are limitations on that, but it is a way to do it. That licensing requirement, now the language becomes important because in the code, since it's a Dillon State, we are a Dillon State, it says every person. It says every person shall apply for a license for each business or profession when engaging in a business in this jurisdiction. There's where the problem comes. I think you would have difficulty singling out one business and requiring them to apply for that registration. So if you intend to move down that road, it would be requiring a registration of most all the businesses... all the businesses and professions in Buckingham County. So with that, the short of it, you would be able to do a byright use. You would be able to do the registration if you adopted a business registration applying to all the businesses. But certainly, that would have implications larger than what you might want to undertake, because that would require all businesses to go. As for requiring somebody to give you the results of what they found, I can't find any authority to allow you to require that. I'll be happy to try to answer your questions, talk a little bit further, elaborate a little bit.
Excuse me. This may not relate, but, I mean, under current zoning, they, can they drill?
The, this is where we've had some frank discussion and some good discussion, because it helps us understand sort of where we are. The law, as I interpret it, when it comes to zoning, if you've adopted a zoning ordinance, you have established the uses that can be done in those various zones. In other words, you can do things in A1 you can't do in B1. And so you, the interpretation is, if it is a use that is not allowed or not listed, it's not permitted. So in A1, we don't find anything at all related to commercial prospecting. So the notion would be, it is not allowed in that district.
So can we find?
You could.
And, you know, they've broken rules.
Well...
I'm asking legally.
Legally, you could proceed.
We can't as a planning commission, y'all need to understand that. We're not the law enforcement.
Enforcement officer to bring an action against them. You could do that. And then the court would determine whether they actually have invalid ordinance. My reading says that they have.
Get some money from them.
Well, the...
Please, let's hold up on the audience participation.
That's a question that, if you want to direct enforcement to proceed with that, that'd be up to the Board of Supervisors, whether they want to direct enforcement to proceed.
Not up to the Planning Commission.
Well, they've been in the county since 1995, doing testing in different parts of the county.
Right.
But they have been drilling in the area that they're at for the last four years, and we just found and heard about it. And there wasn't nothing in that zoning that said they could or they couldn't, so, yeah.
Well, there are a lot of...
Where does that leave you? How does that leave you?
Well, it, you know, the date, I'd have to check on a couple of things in regard to the date, but the fact that it hadn't been discovered until recently...
Right.
Doesn't mean, unless they were doing something in the county on a fairly regular and consistent basis before zoning was ever adopted. And just because it's not discovered, doesn't mean you're prohibited from enforcing your ordinance. On the other hand, I worry, you know, just because somebody steals a dollar a day and we didn't find about the dollar that they stole the first day a long time ago, doesn't mean that they didn't break the law.
And it also doesn't mean that they gave the dollar to us.
That's right. We, and certainly, there's no dollars that I'm aware of.
I don't appreciate our integrity being called into question. Because we are all just finding out about this.
So I pivoted a little bit in that memo you had before you'd ask, you know, to really suggest to you, because it might be more than you'd want to undertake with adopting a business registration. So your options really are to do nothing, which means it's not a permitted activity as a position I'd take legally. Or you can do it as a special use permit, which is sort of where the board was heading, but that too would require an amendment. Or you can do it as a byright use with the registration, if you adopt the other component of that, or you can just do it without registration and just make it a byright use. Those are really the various possibilities I see that the, that the board has, that the planning commission has.
But we really don't have to do anything, right?
If you don't do anything, it's not a permitted use.
Right.
Mining is not permitted in A1.
Mining is different. Mining is allowed in certain districts in the county. It's spelled out pretty clearly. And actually, of the mining operations in the county, I think both of those probably precede zoning, so the word grandfathering potentially could be used with those.
Right, but it's not in A1.
No, mining's not in A1.
Right.
You know roughly what year zoning was initiated in Buckingham?
The court, it's October 1997.
Ninety-seven. I'd say they were here in ninety-four.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Been in the nineties for a little while.
Does grandfathering apply in this case?
I'd need more information.
You'd have to, yeah, that's just a...
Okay.
Discussion. I don't, I don't know anything facts.
I, I do know that there has been core sampling going on in the county long prior to zoning.
Right.
But if we didn't know about it?
Well, actually, some of it I expect, well, you know, I, I've gotten to be an old man, I'm pretty happy about that. I want to continue to be, to be an older man. There, there was a time when I was a, you know, when, when school was uphill both ways, then I actually, one summer worked for a coal drilling company, and I believe they were a company that was working for another company that was looking for, they weren't looking for gold, they were looking for another mineral, but I actually had to see that operation. So that's the report that you asked, and, and so I think really now it becomes whether you want to, want to proceed. I, I wrote you another little memo really dealing with procedure, because I think it gets to be important as to where we are. And I, you know, I realize getting these to you at the, at this, in this type of context is not optimum, but there were a few things that I felt like I needed to take a look at. Where we are, if you remember, the board and the planning commission were to have a joint hearing, and for, for reasons that are not really relevant here, that didn't happen. So now you're in two different positions. And again, being the Dillon Rule state, the state gets to specify by statute how things proceed. And the, the controlling language here is, "No zoning ordinance shall be amended or enacted unless the governing body has referred the proposed amendment or reactment to the local planning commission for its recommendation." And when you have a joint hearing, typically, the notion is, you're having it together, so they've referred for you to consider it. Since that meeting is not rescheduled, I, I think we, if, if there is some action that the board wants to take, and it may, I mean, the planning commission wants to take, then I think you should communicate to the, to the board, just procedurally, "We would like for, to consider such and such as it relates to this issue." And then the board will have a chance to react and say, "Okay, planning commission, take a look at it." Because whatever action you take, other than taking no action, you've got to have a public hearing on it. But I would suggest you not have that public hearing till you get some feedback from the Board of Supervisors as to whether they want you to consider that direction or not. Now, that public hearing can be joined, just like it was originally envisioned. In other words, they can say, "Hey, okay, look at it, and why, by the way, why don't we have a joint hearing so we can see where we stand?" But that's sort of the, the ten thousand foot view of sort of where I believe we are with what you can do, and procedurally, how it might be accomplished.
So if we want to do nothing...
Nothing.
We do, we don't have to do anything.
Right.
And they would not be permitted to drill?
Until somebody changes, and there's a definite way that it has to be changed.
I, I apologize, guys. I, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I'm...
I think they're fair questions.
I'm doing a little bit of catching up.
I, I think they're fair questions, because it helps us put it all sort of in perspective. I, I think it's good to have sort of the continuum laid out here.
Right, do we have the ability to table this to get more information on these?
Which, which, you can always seek more information. Table, I would suggest, you might want to use another word. Table automatically, if you follow the rules, I think a parliamentary procedure, it's got to be your first item of all business when it comes back around. So if you want to lay it aside to, until you get further information, I think that would be a problem.
Well, some, some very valid points were brought up by some of the speakers, and especially Mr. Schwartz indicated on this core sampling, that it's some information we probably ought to have. I've done some research, but, you know, it's limited. These experts would be willing to come and discuss. I am, I would like to know more about it, if, if any way possible, as far as what the, what the chemical that may be used, what kind of results you have, and what may be residuals left over, things of this sort. But, you know, that's why I was asking if it would be...
Certainly, you're not required to take any action tonight.
That's, that's my thinking, if, you know, or do we want to take action, John? I mean...
I think we ought to invite the, invite your geologists and your health department off next, next meeting.
I'd like to get more information, because I, you know, even though I look stuff up, it's, it's limited, as we're getting at.
Yeah, I talked to one geologist.
If we're going to change something, we need to look at it long-term, and I don't oppose an advisory committee made up of citizens, personally.
I think we ought to get your geologists and the health department in here next, our next meeting, our work session. We'll have time to look at this and listen to more. People who know each other.
I, I would...
Right.
Excuse me, didn't mean to interrupt, Mr. Chairman. I, I would, I would think you might want to communicate to the board what you're planning on doing, simply because there was, that, that first night it was, when, that first joint meeting, there was a lot of sentiment to do something fairly quickly.
Right.
And I, and I think there's been maybe a change of position, I assume, by this body for the discussion I'm hearing, and it may be that the board, it'd be well to explain to the board, "We want to gather more information, and if you want to direct us what things to study, we have here the items that we want to look at. And if you want any zoning, if, you know, they can, then they can tell you what they might want you to consider if they want any zoning change."
And until that time, it is still not permitted?
It is not permitted until it is changed, in my estimation.
We ain't making no changes.
And the board can take action if, 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 as far as any fines or anything?
The, the board will have to, I believe, to comply statutorily with making changes to the zoning ordinance referred back to you to study. And then a part of that study will be a public hearing in which you would solicit comments. Then you would make a recommendation to the board, that, that recommendation be, "We don't think it's a good idea, or we think it's a great idea, we don't think you should do anything," or something else. And then having done that, the board is not tied, not totally restricted by your action, they can advertise and do what they want to do in regard to that zoning thing, but they've got to touch base with you to get the planning commission's reaction to it before they move forward.
But what I'm hearing is your suggestion legally as for us to go to the board first and ask...
I, I think you would...
What direction do we need to start looking at this?
I think you would tell them that we've heard valid, what we believe to be valid public comments tonight. We would anticipate that we'd like to do a little further study. We're looking at options, including everything from, and we take that list if you want to, and say, "What direction do you want to give us?" And, and if they say, "We don't want to do anything," that's sort of, you don't need to worry about it more. If they say, "Well, we're still thinking about doing A, B, or C, or A, B, and C," then they can send it back to you, and you can continue your, your moving forward. But that, that, those decisions are entirely up to this group and the board. All I want to do is, you know, I've always said my position was to keep you between the dishes, the ditches. I've done this for a long time. I try not, I usually have an opinion on something. I try not to make sure you don't know my opinion on it, because I don't think that's my role as an advisor. I'm a legal advisor, and I try to keep you between the legal ditches.
So, John, I'm hearing, I guess everybody wants to, first, we go, to go to the board, so I make a motion that we go ask the board, however...
I, I think just a lot of would be fine, to either just direct the administrator, I mean, your plan of zoning to communicate it to the board. And you've got a board representative here, and he can carry that to them in a, in a pretty good way.
It's four hours here tonight.
Uh-oh. Well, I, you know, they're here, but I think it's good to document this.
Right, right. Yeah, I would, to me, I would like to just invite all the people who, like your geologists, the health department, whoever can give us some more information on it here, next, our next meeting, and invite the board, where they can come here, we're all here at one time, learn what we can, you know?
Board meets before you come back, so I think you should, should update the board on what you're planning and invite them to participate, just so they, they will be aware of it and not inadvertently step off in a different direction, though you've got a majority here, and I don't think that would happen.
Danny, I think it'd be very important to hear from some experts, because not only doing a due diligence for this application or situation, but in the future, you know, it's going to probably be something else that comes for us, so, or we can learn, and all this mining and core sampling and idiots from that, I think are better.
I think it's also important that we realize that, as has been pointed out in many of the speakers tonight, the area that's being affected is made up of people mainly between 50 and 100, as it says in the paper. These people cannot afford tax increases. The only way to avoid tax increases in this county is to get business in here. So let's not forget that one.
Like to look at, yeah, we'll look at more.
Any other questions? I'll stand down.
So we need a motion to do this?
No, I think you said just a letter.
I think you can do it by consensus, you know, you don't need to, I mean, you have a motion if you want to.
I gave you a motion. If you want to vote on it, that's fine, you can...
What was your motion again, Chuck?
To ask the board what direction they want us to head in. Ask the board to sit about it.
Do you?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
As far as this mining goes.
All in favor, raise your hand.
unanimous. I appreciate your patience with me and microphones. Thank you.
We'll give you all those three minutes.
Yeah.
New business.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, new business tonight is the introduction of case 20 ZMA 280. On the introduction, I made a couple of errors, because I am human and obviously have problems with the numbers one and five. Our land donor is Lucy Jamerson, address 115 Acre Point Lane, Dillon. And our applicant is Amos Byler. He's currently at 3145 Union Church Road, Dillon, Virginia 23936. The tax map number is 151, as indicated in his application, 151 parcel 15. It's containing approximately 20 acres. The original parcel is 67.76 acres, and this is in the Watson and Dugan Platt date at September 26, 2018, and approved for recordation 10/2/2020. This is located on East James Anderson Highway, Route 60, in the Curdsville Magisterial District. The zone currently is A1. Mr. Byler's request tonight before you is a zoning map amendment. He is asking the planning commission to recommend a public hearing date to hear the request for rezoning from agricultural A1 to business B1 for the purpose of operating a business on a main corridor, Route 60, as indicated in his application. This property is located one mile east, not west, of Sprouse's Corner at the, after the intersection of Route 15 and 60. The comprehensive plan does list Route 60 as a main corridor, and this property is one mile from Sprouse's Corner, Dillon, Alpha High Growth Area, which is generally appropriate for residential business and limited industrial development of medium and higher density. The property is currently zoned A1 and owned by Lucy Jamerson. Mr. Byler currently has this property under a purchase contract with Mrs. Jamerson and a closing date of November 6, 2020. Mr. Byler has plans to subdivide this property, which is the 20 acres, into three lots. He has submitted within the narrative of his application that he wishes to relocate Spring Hollow Market to Lot 2, possibly a retail farm supply hardware store to Lot Number 1, and a wholesale outlet for local produce to Lot Number 3. Mr. Byler has met with VDOT to discuss entrance options. He's also met with Lynn Hill, our county ENS inspector, to discuss land disturbance and possible necessary actions. to discuss land disturbance and possible necessary actions. And Mr. Byler is also in contact with engineers and surveyors for his next development steps. Mr. Byler, along with his business partners, John King and Jonathan King, are with us tonight to address any questions you may have.
Do the commissioners have any questions?
Byler's coming, tell us what he wants to do.
Mr. Byler, you want to come to the microphone and, just in your own words, explain what it is you want to do here?
Well, good evening, everybody. Yeah, what we're looking at...
Got to state your name and address.
Sorry about that. My name is Amos Byler and what else?
Address.
Where I live?
Yeah.
Thirty-one forty-five Union Church Road in Buckingham, Virginia.
Okay.
What we're looking at, what Nikki told you, I thought she explained it pretty good. But yeah, we're purchasing the farm there, subdividing it. I have a couple of the other guys here that are interested in setting up a business there. I'm basically just, I guess, supplying the land. And they're kind of interested in setting up a store and produce auctions, maybe a hardware farm-related store. It's not a hundred percent yet. Uh-oh.
Mr. Byler, if you would, please explain for the, for the audience what a produce auction is. I've personally been to one, and I think they're wonderful. But if they don't know what it is, they don't have a clue.
Yeah, what, I mean, I guess I feel a little green in that myself. I've, I've known produce auctions, I've never had a lot to do with them, but Jonathan King here could maybe explain it a little better.
You can come up. Thank you. State your name and...
Good evening, everybody, it's Jonathan King, three twenty-eight Johnson Station Road, Dilwyn. Guess you got questions on a produce auction. Generally, farmers will consign their product and it'll be up most, usually we try to do a wholesale. It'll be up for auction, usually to the highest bidder. I guess we think it's a good way to market our produce. Simple way. You have any other questions?
Is this for the Amish community exclusively, or is it for the wide open?
It should be open to the public. If anybody wants to consign.
When we had been to one in the past, there'd been people there that had run restaurants and those type of things, and they had come to purchase. And it was, it was a big, big to-do.
Yeah, we, we prefer to have the wholesale buyers, but there's always some retail stuff there. I guess, getting started here, there's a lot, there's not a lot of volume here. We'd probably have to allow more smaller lots.
So would you go over exactly what you're going to put on each lot again?
The proposed always a produce auction, I think you said on Lot Three. Spring Hollow Farm Market down on Route fifteen on Lot Two.
That, the middle lot, I mean, there's, mine is not numbered.
That is maybe the middle lot.
One of them is.
Yeah, I've got several copies of it.
I guess this one here. You have one that looks like this. I'm going to assume Lot One is the first one we come to.
This one?
Mr. Byler, do you want, Mr. Byler, would you come forward? I'm going to bring you a copy of what you submitted and explain to them, please.
Oh, I know, but which lot is it?
There you go. The person that shows two of the parcels with three hundred and twenty-five feet of road frontage, Mr. Byler will be utilizing that to describe Lot One, Two, and Three.
Yeah, this one's blank. Can you just look on it and tell us what Lot One, Two, and Three is?
Lot Number One is the first one when you're heading east on Route sixty.
All right.
Is the six acres?
That's Lot One, okay.
Yeah. And then the next one will be Lot Number Two.
Next three twenty-five frontage.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the triangle one would be Lot Number Three.
Okay. And which, what was you putting on each one?
Oh, okay, yeah. On Lot Number Three is where we're planning to put the produce auction. Johnson was saying, basically, a lot of, I mean, produce growers bringing their, their fruit, vegetables, whatever, flowers, auction.
Looks nice.
We're thinking for our committee to help get, I guess, be at home with the family more.
Right.
Work with our children and stuff. And a good way to start in produce.
Lot Two, what are you...
Lot Two is going to be for Spring Hollow Farm Market. John King is trying to buy that and...
A, a market?
The Spring Hollow Farm Market is actually on Route fifteen at the Jason Meeks property, which used to be Bates, yeah.
Okay, so that, that is Lot Two.
That's going to move here to Lot Two.
I got you. Very nice, very well done. And Lot One is?
Lot One is not a hundred percent yet. We have a guy that's looking at it, that he's considering putting a, like a farm produce, I mean, hardware store, farm supplies, whatever. I'll see that's going to happen, it's also definitely in that one.
I'm just trying to get it out there. I, I want you to go to public hearing, you know? I think everybody deserves a right to go to public hearing to, you know, hear what everybody else has to say, so... No, you know, I'm, I'll make it a motion if we need to, to public hearing.
Hold on just a second, Chet.
That's fine.
Mr. Byler, when I talked to you the other day, we had discussed maybe trying to reduce it from three entrances. And you said that VDOT, you were in discussions with them. Did they have any thoughts on it?
When I talked with him over the phone, like I did to you the first time, he was trying to talk the same way you did, trying to get everything all of one, one entrance. And then we went out there and we met at the site there. He looked at it and, you know, it, when you're out there, it's kind of a long distance.
Yeah.
To have everything all of one, one entrance, he saw that. So he, he recommended maybe two entrances. The first one, we're looking at maybe like right where the subdivision of Lot Number One and Two. Subdivision somewhere. And then, then the produce auction will have its own separate entrance somewhere. And if I understood him right, I don't know if you got anything from...
I spoke with him last week confirming that he did state, and he's getting more documentation from their engineers. They're trying to eliminate, of course, the need for three entrances. And just as Mr. Byler stated, the VDOT representative wants to have a shared entrance between Lot One and Two, but with the volume of traffic, if any of you have participated in the open air produce market in Cullen, which this VDOT representative worked on that entrance as well, this would require strictly due to the volume of traffic and the larger trucks that would need the turn distance in and out of there for maximum safety and, and not to impact the, the flow of traffic, an entrance for Lot Three for the open air produce market and a shared entrance at Lot One and Two so far.
And having looked at it and having been in that business before, I would suggest that you get a whole lot where, in front of Lot One, the road is falling down from Route sixty, they land, then it goes back up. Get out that ditch before you try to put your entrance. Go down to the middle of Two if need be, and come back with a driveway to the first one.
As far as, what was your reason for that?
Just the sheer cost of trying to go through a big hole.
Oh, I see, yeah. Trying to come out where it's more level.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty level along Lot Two there.
Yep.
Okay, that's just a suggestion to you.
Now, I know you mentioned something about wondering how many semis...
Yes.
Would come into the produce auction. I talked with one of these guys, and he said for the, to start off with, maybe not more than one.
Right.
You know...
But let's go down the road three or four years. What do you hope to attain by then? What's your list?
Four or five.
Okay.
That would be the semis. Now, there might be some, you know, straight jobs coming in.
Right. Well, you might want to look at something like a U-turn on that lot itself to where they're coming in one and going out another. You know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
So that you don't have trucks trying to come out and trucks trying to go in, especially tractor trailers with no turn lanes in there.
Is that something that an engineer could decide, or...
Yeah, I think whoever lays your plan, they could pretty much tell you exactly how you could do it. But you could have an entrance and an exit wouldn't, that weren't necessarily the same. And that's, maybe it doesn't need to be done with one coming in to start with. But when you start adding them and you get four or five there, it could be a problem. Anybody else have any comments or questions, Mr. Byler? Want to make your motion now, Chet?
I'll make the motion, we move it forward to a public hearing.
I'd like to second that.
Have a first and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous.
All in right hand.
Thank you, Mr. Byler. Building permit report has been submitted for your review. I don't have anything as zoning administrator.
Commission matters.
Commissioners have anything?
Please adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yard.